And then the bathroom downstairs is going to go in the little space that is sort of empty on the first floor that's left by that nook that is there. And then upstairs, we're going to get a bathroom on one side and a bigger bedroom on the other.
When I was ripping that place apart to fix it up.
We have a hearing at eight and we'll do some other quick business that we can do between now and eight o'clock. And you've been investigating the Committee for Economic, not economic, excuse me, Capital Planning?
Well, I haven't been investigating it, but I recruited somebody.
Economic Development?
No.
No, it was Capital Planning Committee.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to know anything about it?
Sit up here.
A boy in the hot seat.
So I have a house with a dirt basement Janet's familiar with.
Okay, could you just give us some background that would fit in with the capital planning?
Uh, sure. I am a human chiropractor, so I have a doctorate in chiropractic. I'm board certified in both animal chiropractic and neurology, and so I've run my own chiropractic practice out of my house here in Berlin for, since 2004 now. Yeah, that's crazy, right? So I have some limited business experience doing that and managing, you know, people and employees and day-to-day stuff and scheduling and finances and that sort of thing. So that's about the extent of my sort of education and experience.
Okay, you have some business experience.
Yes, yeah.
And you have some experience of buying capital?
Yes, so certainly, you know, buying.
Machines or whatever you use in here.
Exactly, exactly. Space and computers and equipment and managing, you know, here's the capital I have, here are the things I have. How do I figure out how to do, I'm just, you know, I'm just me, so I'm the only person responsible.
It's not like on a bigger scale and evaluating, and cost of town meeting has to pass it. So I think we're looking for the advisory committee to give us some insight on whether that's, is practical for this to be done.
Certainly, as a town member, it would be great to see something like a checkbook that said, you know, "We have $100,000 in the bank. We need to buy these 16 things. How do we allocate our funds best to purchase those things?" I feel like when I go to town meeting, it's sort of a free-for-all. We know what we're buying and we know how much each thing is costing, but it, to me, it's not very clear how much we have to spend and how that money is being equally or somewhat prioritized and allocated. Prioritized and allocated.
I think we look forward as the committee to look at what's needed. Do we need it? Do we need it now? How much does it cost? And various peoples from various boards will be on it and represent various boards.
Right.
And I don't think they have the authority to pass it or turn it down, but I think their recommendation goes to the town meeting. I think they look at it with a will. That's what the town meeting needs. Somebody has looked at these things.
Yeah, it seems to me like we've got a whole bunch of great committees in town, but there are very few people that are aware of what's going on in all of the committees and trying to sort of balance, I don't know, who's talking to whom and what's, you know, what the priorities are of each committee.
Yeah, that's a good job. Good part of working on this committee is very easy on your taxes.
That's great. That sounds like such a bonus.
Thank you, free, yeah. Thank you, free, too.
Yeah, right.
Do we know what the schedule is, like how often the meetings are?
Do you want to?
Do you know?
I guess the committee will, once they get the members, they'll come up with their own schedule.
Oh, yeah.
I always say that.
What do we know about it? About the committee? Anything in writing?
Hello, Louise, can you help us out? Do you know about the, whether the committee is, what kind of meetings? Have they scheduled anything or are they just trying to?
Well, they can't schedule until you know what the, who the members are.
Yeah.
So when we set up our committee, we created a schedule, but not until it was created and started.
Yeah, I guess that's the order to go in, right?
And I believe they report to the Finance Committee and the Selectmen by the end of December. So you would probably have something in maybe October, November, December.
Yeah, I guess Economic Development Committee, he says, here's all the members, go meet and decide what you want to do and how you want to do it, right? Who's going to get with the, this committee and say to them, "Okay, you got a committee"? Is the Selectman doing that?
I wouldn't be, I really don't know, but I would be surprised if the Finance Committee was not involved.
Yeah.
Because they are serving as a resource to the Finance Committee and the Selectmen.
Who's appointing this committee?
What's that?
Who's appointing this committee?
The Selectmen.
Well, two, the Selectmen, one, the Planning Board, and one, the Finance Committee.
We just, everyone points a member, and we're appointing a member now. We're looking to appoint a member, but the question's, where does Anna go from here?
Yeah.
I think she, if she's appointed, should wait until all the members, you can only wait until the members are appointed?
Yes.
All of them.
You give me her email and then I can notify you as soon as I am notified.
I'll just sit back and wait.
And I can tell you that Anna.
Well, John Solera, he came in and he was one today.
Okay.
And he was appointed by the Selectmen. And I believe Judy Tate has been appointed by the Selectmen. So there's one from the Planning Board. I think the Finance Committee will have an ex officio member, and I wouldn't be, and the moderator has one person.
So that's six, five?
Five, yeah. Usually you have an odd number.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an odd time. I believe Dave Westerling is going to be the Finance Committee member, but I have not been notified of his appointment. They could choose somebody else just to spite me. That's okay.
And I can tell you that Anna adjusts the horse as a friend of mine.
Well, that is a good thing for her.
That's a recommendation.
Are we going to expect our representatives to come back and talk to us and tell us what's going on?
That was my next question.
I think this.
Finance, probably.
Yes, the Finance Committee that needs this information.
But if you guys are appointing me, do I have some bearing on my responsibility to you guys as a board?
Well, it says that their responsibility is to submit annually to the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, which will include a recommended capital on extraordinary expense for the coming year and a capital on extraordinary expense budget for the following four years of anticipated continuing capital and extraordinary expenditures. And then it says there, shall meet when necessary and at a minimum of semi-monthly in the months of November, December, and January, and it shall meet annually upon submission of the chip. The chip is, let's see, I, to the Board of Selectmen to facilitate the funding recommendations on the consideration of capital. So their responsibility is, as you said, to the Selectmen and the Finance Committee. We, of course, would enjoy being in the loop, but it's not mandated here. Committee shall consider all such requests and in doing so may confer with any town officer, department, board, or committee or request additional information that determines is needed in order to evaluate prioritize submitted items. So, you know, I take it as the third leg of the stool, that you have the Finance Committee, then you have this Capital Planning Committee, and you have the Economic Development Committee, and those three committees working jointly really offer us, I think, an opportunity to look into the future, do some forecasting, you know, prioritize, be able to speak more influentially at town meeting and, you know, share a lot of guidance. So I think it's great. It's going to be good.
Did you schedule good with you mean?
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't, I mean, it sounds like six times a year-ish, more in the fall than any time else.
Yeah. The Board of Selectmen shall not place on the warrant any capital or extraordinary expense without prior review by the committee unless the Board of Selectmen deems the item to be of an emergency nature. So, you know, they're going to.
Has some power.
There's one thing, the Attorney General threw out that sentence.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
That whole?
Just that sentence, because if somebody does a citizen's petition, Selectmen have no authority to change that.
Hmm, good. Well, you just lost a lot.
I did. Shucks.
Just as well.
Okay. I see one from John Soleri. He got a letter from the Board of Selectmen appointing him.
Okay.
And I guess we should give a similar letter to you.
Okay.
Just change the words like your name.
Oh, you can just send me his letter.
Oh, oh, oh. I'll just scratch out this one.
There you go, like a check.
What is your address, by the way?
It's 24 Highland.
24 Highland.
It's the one I gave at town meeting a few days ago, I mean, a few years ago. I forgot where I was from.
Oh.
Anna.
Crane.
Crane, that's C.R.A.N.E.
Like the bird, yeah. That's funny, you forgot where you were from.
Was there a lot of his?
Yeah, just one or two.
First capital expenditure in the next terraced network, of course, riding trails.
That sounds fantastic. Yeah, if it's got a rural or horsey bent to it, I'm all for it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before, or I will accept the.
Hi, is the, are you board meeting?
Mm-hmm. Would you like to make a motion that we.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
See you on the dark side.
Yeah.
Peter, are you here to observe? Do you have a special thing you want us to talk this about now?
We've got five minutes. No, I'm just here to observe. I thought it's time to see our paranoidization.
Okay.
But thanks for asking.
Okay.
And as you know, I got your email about the malls.
Yeah, we got some, I guess I sent it to everyone yet, but.
No. Or did you just send it to me? I just didn't know.
It was an article last Sunday's.
Yeah, the whole zoning idea is something that Tim and the EDC presented to them when they were in. So I think until they have a practical use to make his own application change, they probably won't.
Yeah, I was just, you know, just some thoughts of the things that were going on in the article. If they want to do some similar things here, would we have any problem with it?
Yeah, maybe I'll send it to them and open a dialogue. But I'm sure they're, look, they're scrambling hard to keep and fill spaces and prepare for the inevitable.
It seems like, well, I guess the article says, well, all these places are trying to go outside to make outside areas rather than big corner hallways. But, of course, that takes a lot of construction to do some of those things.
Who's he talking about?
It's all in the front row.
Yeah.
It's all in the front row.
It was an article in the Sunday Globe that the internal malls, the internal hallways, they're kind of dying, and people want to be able to pull up to wherever they're going to do their shopping rather than parking at one end and walking around. And some of the malls are putting outside entrances to the individual stores. They're putting in high-class tenants, like big restaurants, fancy restaurants, so people would be going there for other things.
So we can put Shopper's World back up again, right?
Yeah. Well, Shopper's World didn't do that. That was, that was the same thing with the hallways, only they were.
And it's when we opened the hearing.
Did I bring it? No.
We've got a couple minutes.
Got any bills?
I've got to get, but that one, I don't.
Just put that one back.
Yeah, that wasn't.
We'll put in the building inspector's folder.
Okay, no bills, a poster voucher.
You ready?
Well, almost. I just say hello. I think, well, that clock, as usual, is a little slow. I read eight o'clock, and I justified with the world time clock on my computer, so the hearing is now open.
It is eight.
Smite drugs, sorry.
He's no longer with Waterman Design Associates.
Okay, that's what happened.
We have with us today Greg Scotty, who is with Waterman Design and who is helping us with the subdivision we're going to propose tonight. Also with us is Brian Fundleiter, who is the president of Boundless Adventures, which has the company that proposes to lease part of River Run and install an outdoor adventure park, and of course, my brother Matt. As you know, Matt and I are the developers of River Bridge, and we have filed this application for subdivision approval at River Run, which is not part of River Bridge, but which we purchased at the time we saw zoning approval for the entire project. And we, you may recall that we bought it and canceled a 40B project that had been approved by the ZBA, which really had no choice but to approve it. And so we promised in the development agreement that we sign with the Board of Selectmen and record on the land records that we wouldn't do a project like the 40B project. We would only use River Run as its zone and it's the back portion of its own limited business. So there continues to be a right to put something there that complies with that zone. So I would like to do a few things tonight, but before we get started, I'd like to say that we received your engineers' comments yesterday. It's dated August 26th from Haley &amp; Ward, Inc. I think you may have referred the definitive subdivision plan out to Haley &amp; Ward, and Scott Miller issued this letter, which we received. Scott is here. We have not yet squared up with Scott on the items he's listed in this letter as wanting to see put on the plan and the items that he feels need more treatment. And so what we propose to do tonight is to open the public hearing, introduce the reason we're getting subdivision approval now, which is Brian's project, have Greg introduce you to the subdivision plan, but then ask that the board continue the hearing until your next regularly scheduled meeting. Hopefully, that would be about two weeks from now, and that would give us the chance to have Greg and Scott review all of the comments that have been made and for us to create a record subdivision plan that then you would be able to vote on.
Can we go over those comments briefly during this meeting?
We can.
Well, this is a big, going to be a problem with these. We can take care of it.
Sure, I think we will, and I think I'll let Greg go through it because he has a copy of this with his notes, "will do, will do, will do," or other comments. So I think we can get into the weeds on that a little bit.
Could you address also the access to this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Sure. I have a plan that depicts the subdivision. I don't know if the camera wants me to be able to orient this in a way. I don't know if viewers at home would be able to see this. This is the River Run property, which we purchased from John Deli Percoli as we set out to get zoning approval for the whole River Bridge project. It's 26 acres of land, and it comes in off of River Road West just to the north of Spooky World and across from the meadow that the town recently purchased from the Reese family. And it comes in this way, and there is a developable area here that's about seven acres, and the rest of it is not developable, and it does bend around over here, and when this was going to be a 40B project, the sewer system was going to be here. And what we did with the town when we thought there was an opportunity to buy River Run and cancel the 40B project is we talked about tonight, we actually talked about tonight and this subdivision of River Run back in 2009. And on December 9th of 2009, we actually signed a development agreement that calls for this subdivision, the creation of a small private road that will be privately maintained, but which will be a way, and the creation of two lots, Lot 6A and Lot 6B. And both of these two lots have an area that is developable, and both are about 12 acres. 6B is 12.73 acres and 6A is 12.25 acres. So if you were to take from the land records our recorded development agreement and go all the way to the back, the very last page is a schematic of this very subdivision. And the plan was that we would first cancel and agree never to build the 40B project. That was 32 single-family homes. 26 of them were three-bedroom. It would have generated about the same number of schoolchildren that we have now zoned down at River Bridge with our apartment, and yet the town would have gotten credit for only eight affordable units because it was a for-sale product, project. And so it wasn't very favorable to the town. It was kind of forced upon the town because we aren't at the 10% affordable. It would have only given the town eight housing, eight affordable units, so the town wasn't going to gain much leverage. And what we said back in December of 2009 is, look, we've put this under contract, we'd like to purchase it, we'd like to cancel the 40B, and we'd like you to consider approving River Bridge, where we hoped the town would agree to zone in apartments, making 84 of them restricted to rental only, that can never be turned into condominiums, and therefore, under the bonuses that are part of Chapter 40B, the town gets credit for all 84 units. So for the same school impact, by zoning in apartments down at River Bridge, the town gets itself well above the 10% and would no longer be subjected to what we call unfriendly 40Bs. So that's how this began.
So the development agreement, that was the River Bridge development.
It was the River Bridge development.
It's not a development agreement just for this piece of property?
Correct.
Okay, this is all work in the development, tying things together.
Except that paragraph 14.7 of the development agreement is titled River Run, and it goes seven pages. And in those seven pages, and again, this is recorded on the land record, we talk about what are we going to do together with River Run, and it contains the promise not to build housing here. It contains the promise that we'll do a subdivision road at the time we're ready to use this property. It talks about two lots, and it provides the option for the town to buy Lot 6B for a dollar. All of that is spelled out, and all of it has been maintained and in place today. So what we are hoping to do through this subdivision process is implement a plan that was actually approved by the voters back in December of 2009. So as I mentioned, this will be a private road. It has a width that will be 20 feet at its narrowest point. We have requested some waivers, although in the two weeks that we hope will allow us to square up on engineering, we may be able to eliminate one of the waivers. One of the waivers we asked for was a grade coming in off of River Run that didn't meet your regulations, and Greg has now revised that plan a little bit so that we don't need that waiver. And we'd like to sit down with Scott, show that to him, and maybe pull one of the waivers out. We're doing the subdivision plan now because we met Brian Fundleiter and Boundless Adventures, and unbeknownst to us, back in December of 2009, Brian and his company are interested in putting an outdoor adventure park on the back part of the River Run property. And the nice thing about it is the parking for the park is partly on each of the two lots, 6A and 6B, and the park itself is partly on both lots. And we have reviewed a lease that we proposed to enter into as the owner of River Run. River Bridge owns it, but because the town has a right to buy 6B for a dollar, we've always treated River Run as a kind of partnership between River Bridge and the town. And in the lease, we wrote in language that Brian and his company understand that half of the rent money after taxes and other expenses will go to the town. And the Board of Selectmen had town council review that lease, approve it, and we've signed the lease. And we are going to start construction this fall after gaining three approvals. We've already had the Conservation Commission vote that this use is acceptable to them. It's passive enough to be acceptable to them, but we still have three approvals we need. We need to get subdivision approval from this board to implement the December 2009 concept. We have to get an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission because there are wetlands here that will be impacted, and we have to get site plan approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Usually, your board handles site plan approval for certain projects, but projects of a certain size go to the Zoning Board of Appeals instead. That's all happening at once. These are happening on parallel tracks. I think our public hearing with the Conservation Commission is next week, and the Zoning Board of Appeals is the week after. And that's why we feel that if we slow this down and don't try to get subdivision approval tonight, all in one night, we're not going to slow down construction. And again, we only had a couple days with this letter, and we haven't yet had a chance for Greg to review that with Scott.
Now, what did you do with the Selectmen? I mean, they had a right to purchase that for $1.
They do.
Had that been, has it been purchased?
No, no. The town has not exercised it, and it may not want to yet. And actually, this fall, we hope to do a modification of the agreement to give the town four more years to exercise that option. And that is because the town's insurance rates might go up if an outdoor adventure activity is happening on land owned by the town, whereas if River Bridge continues to own it, the town's insurance won't go up. We would be responsible for managing and ensuring and taking care of this operation as the landowner, but half of the revenues would go to the town. And we need to amend the development agreement to call.
They would get half the revenue, but they haven't purchased the land.
Right. And that's why we need to amend the development agreement to allow the town to get half the rent, and that's, I've been working on a draft amendment to our development agreement that would call for that.
What's the incentive for the town to buy the property ever?
Well, I'll give you the history. This came about while we were talking about mitigation of the impacts of River Bridge, and we've agreed to pay a certain amount of money every year once we reach a certain number of completed square feet at River Bridge, and we thought that that was sufficient mitigation for the impacts to the town. But someone noticed what we were doing with River Run and said, hey, why don't you give the town as an additional form of mitigation the right to buy half of the buildable area of River Run? And we said, okay. This came out of the professional management here at the town, and we just agreed to it, and so we bought this for $667,000. I think it's probably gone up in value. So this, having. So this, having the right to buy half of the buildable area of River Run has an economic value to the town, maybe in the range of $400,000 worth of value. And what we were careful of when we entered into the lease with Boundless Adventures is to carefully explain that the town and/or River Bridge separately or together might build an office building up here one day or something else that's allowed under limited business. And Brian has agreed in this lease that if his parking has to be absorbed into a shared parking with some other use up here, he's agreed, as long as shifting his facilities doesn't interfere with the purpose of his business. So we have a lease opportunity here where we have a lease that calls for 8% of grocery receipts, and an adventure park like this can generate enough that the town and we might split something like $160,000 a year. That's the target, and that's mentioned in the lease. It depends on how sales go and how many people use this park, but the business model looks very sound. So it's kind of found money for both of us. It doesn't prevent the future development, which is being preserved as something that can be done separately, and the town has the right, will have the right after November when we have a warrant article to extend that right to purchase, to be the owner of something that's probably today worth $400,000.
My problem here is, you want to build this, if we approve this subdivision and you build this adventure park, and then the town comes, oh, we want to exercise our right and buy this for a dollar. But we don't want an adventure park on our property. You're going to have to change the development agreements from way before you can, don't you?
What?
If he builds an adventure, if we approve the subdivision and he builds an adventure park on both pieces of property-
Right.
And the town exercises their right to buy that one property for a dollar.
He's putting an adventure park on both pieces of property?
The parking, the parking is partly on both.
Yeah, but that's not the-
And actually, the park itself is here, so the park itself is partially on both.
Oh, okay.
It's on both.
But the Selectmen have signed an agreement-
That's-
-that understands that this entity will operate on that parcel that is potentially something that we share in.
But we, we know that this, I don't want to jump ahead of the Selectmen.
They've already agreed it.
A long time ago.
They've agreed to a-
The adventure park.
Okay, and being partially on the property to-
If the town exercises, it would be buying a piece of property that is subject to a lease, and it would have to honor that lease just like we have to continue to honor it. But that lease will come to an end one day. It's a 15-year lease, so it's a big commitment, but it will come to an end one day, and the town would be the owner of then a developable parcel here. So this is the history, and we feel lucky to have met Brian and to have someone express interest in something that I think will be a beautiful amenity, something that people can use, children can use. He's got a wonderful reputation. He's running two other parks very much like this. And I think we'd like to go through the process that was always envisioned, but now we have a user, so we have a reason to improve the roadway and have people using this. But again, the lease is very careful to preserve the rights that each of us has to move his parking so that we can still develop.
Thank you.
Is there a minimum on the rent?
There is a minimum. Is that 80?
Yeah.
Is it 50,000 minimum, and then it's against an 8%?
50,000 per year.
So this is the history, and again, since we're not looking for subdivision approval tonight, I don't want to go too deeply into the plans, but I do want Greg to just take you through the basics of the subdivision plan that we're talking about. And I'd like Brian just to refresh, I know Brian has come and met you, but I'd like him to refresh your memory on what, what his plan is for this part of River Run. Brian, can we start with your plan?
Sure. So I just, Brian Fundreiter, Boundless Adventures. I've met most of you at some point. So briefly, what we're building is called an aerial adventure park, which consists of platforms and trees connected by various elements such as zip lines.
Actually, you folks have to move around so you can get a better look at it.
I'll be my own easel tonight, just so I, just like deal the slide project. So basically, the park starts on one starting platform, and we envision, actually, we plan, we're going to have seven courses that gear off from one central location. And a course will consist of anywhere between 12 to 15 elements. This element could be any way to get from one tree to the next. It could be a wobbly bridge like that, or a zip line, or any way, a creative, a weird ladder, a skateboard that rolls through the trees. And they come in various levels from easy, really easy to really hard, very much like a ski slope. It's color-coded from yellow to green to blue to black. Climbers will, people will come for a three-hour climbing session, as well as a half-an-hour orientation and equipment. They'll be given equipment. And we're going to be in a reservation-only system, so we can control traffic, and we know when people are coming, and we know how to staff the park. We're going to be open for individuals. We're open for general admission. Whenever school's out, we're open for general admission. So during the summer, we're open seven days for general admission. During the fall and spring, we're open on the weekends for general admission, and during the week, just for groups, pre-advanced, pre-booked groups who likely come in buses and vans, but obviously, if someone comes for a birthday party for 12 kids, even though it might not be the most economical decision, we're not going to turn them away because we want people to come and enjoy our facility. We're going to be running special programs for the local communities, having people come in, charities, non-for-profits, and teams, any, you name it, corporations. We were going to be working with some of the special needs programs in the area. It's a very, very good program for autistic children. So we'll close the park down, and we'll have autistic events for just autistic children to come in and have the park for themselves. At-risk teen programs, I mean, you name it. The Wounded Warriors or other parts are coming twice a year and running events there. They come with their families and climb, and we put red and white and blue all over the place. It's just wonderful. I mean, there's so many great things I can say about it. And I discovered this with my children, my children, my daughter in particular was very introverted. She was about eight years old. We found this, this, this concept in a smaller version down in West Virginia. She really, she had a couple of friends, but she hardly talked, and she's very black and cop. The camera's on, right? There, she probably doesn't get this. So we discovered this, and all of a sudden, my eight-year-old daughter was running through the trees, smiling and clipping her own equipment, and was just in awe. And, you know, I basically gave up my job a few months later and started developing this, this concept because this was something I had to bring to my community and to other communities because it really is, it really is a wonderful, wonderful activity.
When you say general mission, do you mean they just show up and they make a reservation?
Make a reservation. We're going to be in a reservation-only system. Now, if someone, if someone should, if anyone finds out about us, they're going to go to the website, and you're going to see reservation-only. If someone happens to pass by and walk in, and we have a reservation available, we'll have them make a reservation on their phone. We're not going to turn them away, but we're really going to train the public to make reservations because we started in Long Island, no reservations. And what was happening is everyone was coming, the traffic was crazy, and we'd have three-hour waits. And people would be waiting for three hours, and then when they get in the trees, there'd be too many people there, it was chaos. So from now on, we're reservation-only, so, you know, happy to give up 20% of the economics just to make it a good experience for everybody and to control the traffic.
It's going to be open after dark?
Uh, no. So we're going to be open until dusk, and I'll show you. So this is, in the, in the fall and spring, when it gets a little dark, we'll, we're going to have these very ambient Christmas lights just towards the end of the evening. Just, all of a sudden, at 5:30, it gets very dark in October, so we'll just turn these on for the last half an hour, 45 minutes.
Oh, can you drill that on?
Wow, perfect timing.
Time for those Christmas lights.
Yeah, so we're going to, basically going to be open until dusk.
Are you going to have a program for at-risk seniors?
Are you one of them?
Yeah.
Of course. And actually, we had a 94-year-old come have her birthday party at our Long Island Park. So you have plenty of years.
Do you operate Burschere East?
No.
You familiar with it?
Is that the one at Jiminy Peak or Catamount or at the Burschere East ski area? No.
They have a very similar setup, and it's, it's shockingly, for those that have never done this, it's shockingly neat. It's a neat experience, and it's, it's very safe. You're double-clipped in, you can't unclip unless you release another clip, unless he's about to show up.
All right, well, thank you.
Funny you should mention it. Are you a straight man?
It's, it's, and it does have the variable levels of skill. It's, it's quite an experience.
Yes. So on the clips, you're walking through the course, and you have a harness on, and you're whole, this is called an SSB, it's, it's by a company called Bornak. And you're hooked onto a safety line. And one of these clips is always unlocked, and one is always locked. So as you're going, you want to go to the next element, you take the unlocked clip, move it over, and then there's something like this called a tweezele at every point. It works when you're in the trees. And now, this one's locked, and this one unlocks. So now you can move this one to the next element. Lock this one. This is not meant to be done by hand like this, sorry. There you go. This one locks, and this one unlocks. So takes human error out of it. And before you're going to have, it's going to be a foot or two, you're going to hang there, and either you're going to get yourself back up, or our staff are going to come and take care of you and make sure you get to where you're going to go. So it'll be bumps and bruises, but this kind of takes the catastrophic injury out of the question.
Brian, can you take those two drawings and just sort of walk, neighbors can see them?
I'm curious how it's built around the trees. Like, are the trees protected?
The trees are very protected. We do, so we have one bolt through the tree. We used the wrap, the shim method, which didn't use bolts, but we found that the shims were rotting the trees themselves. So I don't know if you've ever seen Treehouse Masters or one of the shows?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, we use their method where we take one single bolt, and we put it through the tree, effectively becomes part of the tree. And then the platform is, gives about four inches, so there's four inches of growth in that area, so the only part of the tree that's affected is that bolt. The tree grows around the bolt and effectively just grows into it. So trees are protected.
Can we pass the, the things around?
Sure.
Do you mind?
No, and that's- Oh, the pictures, these?
Yeah, the pictures.
What is the, it's tweezele, and what's the other?
These are called SSBs.
Tweezele, and there's all kinds of fun names when it's on.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a bunch of PG and rated R.
Oh, I don't know.
And I just brought some other pictures of just some of our Long Island Park, just that. Happy people. This is one of our harder elements on our black course. These are, these are wobbling and moving. Obviously, he's a very strong guy. This is our yellow course. This is seven-year-old, seven, kids, children seven and up can use our yellow courses and our green courses, doing a very slow, low-control zipline, but he's still very happy. As compared to our black course zipline, which is a little bit quicker, that was more photography, but these, he is going faster. This is a picture of our double black course where he's pretty much about to fall off, but this, our double white course has a 75% failure rate.
Wow.
Yeah. Failure meaning like we have to come help you, or you kind of give up and go down. But it's something to work towards. You guys, do you want to pass these around, or?
Anything else I could have?
Any questions for Brian?
We got what we need from that, and what's going to be there.
Greg, would you talk with the board a little bit about the subdivision plan itself?
Sure. Good evening, I'm Greg Scachi, I'm a civil engineer with Waterman Design Associates. And Mr. Cenney's gone through quite a bit of the site plan already, and would like to speak with you. I know that we had three waiver requests, and one of the things that we're looking at is improving the entrance here, the slope, and getting, and in doing so, we're hoping that we don't have to make the waiver request for the, exceeding the grade. We're now at 3% for over 75 feet within the, you know, within a grade of 5% or more. So I believe that will remove the need for that waiver. The other two waivers are still going to be required. The roadway width from edge to edge continues to be, is going to be 20 feet wide. Approximately 400 feet down the road, there's going to be a retaining wall on either side, not very tall. I think at the highest point, it's five feet. And on either side of, of the road, in front of the retaining wall, we'll have a guardrail for safety. The turnaround at the end has a radius of 30 feet. The edge-to-edge on it is 100 feet, meeting the requirements. The intent of the drainage remains the same from the plans that have been reviewed. However, it's, it's a work in progress. We're addressing some of the issues there. It will, storm water will gather on the road, and it will drain down this way into an existing detention facility that will be improved a bit. We're going to need some more volume there.
Where do the cars actually park?
Well, for this, for this exercise, this is just the subdivision-
Yeah.
-with the two lots. Eventually, when the, when the ropes course gets developed, there'll be 100 space parking lot that's, I believe, about right here, right about here.
We can bring that plan-
Yeah.
-when we come back into it.
Well, we have to give you here, what's the maximum people per reservation?
Right, so we're going to, we're going to limit it to 12, 10 to 12 reservations per 15 minutes. So that'd be up to 48 reservations per hour. We don't expect to have 48 people per hour, but it'd be great if we did. So that would be if you, three, two to three people per car, that's 24, two people is 24 cars per hour.
That parking field, that is paved or impervious or?
It will be like a crushed stone surface, much like the roadway itself.
For the handicap.
Now-
We're going to have three handicap spaces, which are paved.
That's correct. The handicap spaces will meet ADA.
What's your estimate of total number of cars per day?
Well, really, it's going to depend on-
On a weekend.
It's going to depend on the length of the day. If we have 10, if we have it over 10 hours, to maybe 150 to 200 cars. It really depends on people. I mean, generally, families come three to four per car, but if we're going to think conservatively, a two-a-car, you know, 100, maybe 150 cars a day, that max.
And I'll, I'll speak with Scott, and many of his comments, my reaction is, we'll do it. There's just a few that I need clarification on or discussion offline, but there's nothing here that is, is going to be problematic.
Would the board like to go over Scott's comments now, or would we wait till they, they work it out? Your preference be, it seems like we-
Maybe we have questions from-
What's that?
We might have questions from the audience.
Oh, yeah. I'm just looking at what the board wants.
Look at and talk a little bit about the extending the driveway beyond the limit. One of the waivers is to extend the length of the driveway to 500 feet. What's the reason for that?
Well, to, in order just to gain access to the site, we needed that extra, I believe it's 500 feet, and the length here is about 700 feet till you get to the turnaround.
Just lay it all in.
Yeah.
What was the reason for the, for the 500 feet to begin with? And we've got to figure that, was it, may I get the fire department, was that that 500 feet requirement because of getting trucks back- Was that that 500 feet requirement because of getting trucks back there or was it excessive amount or?
No, there was, there was no issues with us on the length of the roadway. Just the access turnaround at the end of the parking area. Right.
But I think generally from a zoning point of view, subdivisions, subdivision regulations tend to not want to see really long cul-de-sac roads. So most towns in their subdivision regulations, like Berlin, would have a linear foot max. But like other parts of the subdivision regulations, it's waivable if you feel that in a given situation, it's still safe.
I mean, what it did in essence was control the total number of units that you might create in a subdivision. So it, it kept you on the conservative low side, you know, in residential situations. Which, I mean, that's not what we're facing here. We, we waived it for Priest Road and some other subdivision roads in town that we've done. Although most recent ones have been fairly small and only two or three houses, so they haven't been that long anyways. It's, our, our habit has been, if we thought that we weren't getting an excessive number of units, that it was a waivable condition.
Okay, Scott, you know what you said better than us. You get any big showstoppers?
I don't think so. There are a lot of items in here that I think can be cleaned up just with some drafting changes. Some of the items were, you know, the plan and profile, I don't think was available yet. Or there was one at the preliminary stage, but not in this package. And, and items like that. I don't, I, I don't think there are any items here that would, would stop the project. And I think it may be a lot more efficient if Greg and I do try to deal with it over the next two weeks or so and get them cleaned up.
Okay.
I ask people who have.
Can I ask one question of the fire department before we move on? Does the fire department have any issue with the turn, the width of the pavement at that? What's the width of the pavement at the turn?
It's 20 feet wide.
It's 20? You don't have any problem with that?
Nope.
For the ladder and everything else, it's not a problem?
No. We had a meeting this morning and we went over the preliminary plan and so forth. So we had no issues with, with all of that. So in preparation for this meeting.
Good, okay.
If I can come back, you do have a requirement for a minimum radius of 150 feet. But you also have a requirement that the road is centered in the, in the right of way. I'm not sure where, what the options are here, but sometimes if you move the, move the road off center in, around the curve, you might get a higher radius. But is, I guess, is there any? I think even at 111-foot radius, it's the same as the cul-de-sac. So if it can get, if a large vehicle can get around the cul-de-sac, it's gonna get around that 111-foot radius. So I think that may be the approach to take is stay centered, but reduce the. Are you gonna request a waiver?
No. The, the radius, the centerline radius is 150 feet.
Good, okay.
So I think, I think we meet that minimum requirement now.
I should have left it alone and clarified after the meeting.
It's okay.
Any questions or comments for anyone that's come to this hearing?
Any thoughts for local hiring?
Absolutely. We're gonna need, we're gonna hire between 40 and 45 people. Three will be full-time and the rest will be part-time seasonal staff, absolutely. We'll start first. We'll put, we'll go to the local high schools and civic centers and anybody. Any recommendations, please bring them to me because we'll have to hire people from the neighborhood.
Well, let's say it's on their commute.
Yeah? You're looking for it. I mean, I don't want it.
I live alone, so I have nobody to send you.
No, I want you to come work for me.
We need somebody to demonstrate how this course works.
It would go viral. It's all laughing.
Okay, one more on the, I guess getting the, the nature of the road of the vehicles. What's your overlap on a reservation? That if you, you have the 10 to 12 per 15 minutes, how long is the reservation? Is that, is that car gonna be there for an hour or? It'll be there generally three and a half to four hours. Okay, thanks. And that's not, that's not 10 to 12 cars per hour, that's 10 to 12 people per hour. Yes, sorry. Thank you. And actually, I'm sorry, that's per 15 minutes, not per hour.
Tom Camina from 167 River Road West. First meeting I've attended, so this may be ground you've already covered. But besides that Christmas lighting you showed, what other lighting is there gonna be? Either on the access road or the parking lot or anything like that?
There, there will be some street lighting along the road. We have one at the entrance. There's one at the radius. And then there's two at the turnaround. And we have a lighting plan that shows, that was done by another subs-consultant. The lighting plan shows no, the term.
Yeah. You have, like, that plan has details of the, how, how high and how long they're on at night?
Yes. I believe they'll be on a timer.
They're gonna, well, they're gonna be going, they'll, they'll be on a timer, but they'll likely be shut off before the timer and when the last staff leaves, they're gonna go. Should be by 8:30.
And it is seasonal use. So in the off-season times, I'm not sure how the operation would work, but there is the option to just not have to let, there'll be a gate up near the front end that, so when it is, when rope's course is not open.
Cars can't go down or into the parking lot.
Right. More of a security, I think it's more of a security.
So somebody will be there to do that each and every day, right? Shut the gate or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. How about something, things like maintenance of the site that might be, you know, things like street sweepers or anything like that going on or? That type of maintenance going on?
Yeah, we're, I think we're discussing the maintenance plan that, that River Bridge has with the local neighbors. I think that's something that's in discussion now.
Yeah.
We'd like to be involved in that.
Yeah. You know, there's lots of noise coming from the mall too. You know, early hours, early, early hours. And so during the summer, when your windows are open, you can hear that, you know, it's disturbing. Okay, thanks.
Rob Horn, 172 River Road West. We've, as, these are all the neighbors that basically bought this property. We've discussed a few times with the guys from River Bridge and Boundless Adventures. One thing that, that is a concern, a concern of mine is that the construction of the roadway itself, the entryway. We have whatever, 10 cars use that road day-to-day. So you're talking 20, 30 vehicles up and down the road during the course of a normal day. Now we're getting into 200, 300 cars potentially every day. Plus buses, plus potentially fire trucks, whatever. So the way that, that main entrance is constructed right now is it's, it's an old broken-up gravel road with some asphalt. And then two years ago, as a neighborhood, River Bridge included, we all pitched in, we topcoed it up. So it has, I think, two inches of top asphalt on it. So my concern is that within a short period of time, with this much traffic on it, that road's gonna blow apart. I don't know what's been discussed. Are there plans for a full-depth reconstruction of this roadway? In my opinion, it should be built like a town road if it's gonna require that much traffic on it. Right now, it's built as a driveway. So it's just not gonna withstand the kind of abuse it's gonna take.
Last week, I thought we discussed putting a set amount of money aside because we just did the road two years ago. Then we probably have two more winters where it'll be very functional. And they just leave the money in an account with, just so we can go use it. Nobody has to look for the money either from River Bridge or the neighbors or from Boundless Adventures, but we would just put the money in a bay. And we, we discussed that last week and I brought my brother up to speed on that. He thinks it's a good idea.
Certainly something to consider and.
Yeah, we're just gonna put the money in an account.
What I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of, that's, that's a major concern, I think. You guys have been very amenable to the trees and the screening and everything else we've requested. I just want to make sure that.
I just don't want to throw, do the throwaway cost on something that's only two years old that we all paid for together.
I understand.
I, I think that the amount we talked about was just putting $10,000 in an account that we've just used to redo the road. Gets two, two more winters worth and we'll just redo it. We'll already have the funds available to do it.
Just a Kathy Greve, 164 River Road West. Just to agree with what Rob is saying. Again, that was constructed based on the 10 cars, you know, that are using it now. Do our engineers believe that that's gonna be sufficient for, you know, potentially 24 cars per hour? Plus, plus hours, you know, 150 per day? What's, what's the opinion of, of our engineers on that road?
Well, we have, we have construction details in the subdivision on the road itself.
Yep. And one of the items I have in the list is to find out what is there or to get a record of what is there and how that meets the town regulations for the town standards. And then make a determination from that point of what, what has to be done. What can be, there is kept or whether it should be reconstructed.
Right. Okay. Good. That's really what we're looking for.
Now, on our subdivision, on the road construction, would what's there now meet what's in the subdivision control those now?
They don't know what's there.
I'm not sure what's there. So I've asked them to, to provide some sort of record of what is in the road now and what has been done. But I think your town standard is a 12-inch gravel base and four inches of.
Four inches of top.
Hot top.
These guys are good. They know off the top of their head. So as far as it, if you did or did not, well, we'll discuss that later, what you have and whether you needed enough.
Scott, do you need me to send you the subdivision control?
I have that. I got that online.
Yep.
Yes.
I think, I'm one of the neighbors in the, I'm actually at 148, I think we've met before.
Sure.
So I'm literally the house that this is all going by. And I wasn't able to be at the neighborhood meeting, so I'm not sure if I'm addressing in the right avenue here. But I was gonna meet with Larry, I don't know if he's at this meeting, but about my specific concerns about my property. Because I have obviously two little ones and living there and the traffic is gonna go right by my house at 148. So, you know, this could be in a separate meeting. He said that he would meet with me individually. I don't know if he's here. I haven't met Larry before. But about putting in some kind of privacy because I actually like the idea of the ropes course. I think out of all of the things that are gonna go behind a residential neighborhood, that's probably the most family-friendly and it's a great concept. But obviously, that's directly impacting my house out of, most of every house in Berlin, which was built by my family. So it's a house I really like and wanna stay in with my kids. So I'm just wondering if they're, you know, considering doing something to just add to the privacy of my property. Whether, at first, I thought trees would be enough. Then, you know, my family that built the house thought some kind of privacy fence. But I'm just wondering if that's something that's gonna be addressed here or at the meeting in two weeks or what I would do to get that addressed.
We'll set up a meeting with, with Larry.
I did. He said he would set up a meeting probably this week. I haven't heard back yet. But that's something that's definitely concerning me. But I do like, we're very outdoors to people and everything. It's a nice concept. Hopefully, we'll be able to all come for free in the neighborhood.
You gave an address, but which house is yours?
I don't have the best lemonade stand in town because when the kids are out there, you know, everyone's gonna slide on the way.
Which house is yours?
I'm the first. So if you take a left, we'll go in on the left.
As you go in, the first, what's that one on the left?
Yes.
We're gonna have a meeting next week with a different board. We'll probably get it done. When do you get home from your day? Four, five o'clock in the evening?
I work all different hours actually right now.
We'll get it set up the next time the principals of Boundless are here. We'll walk your property, just like we did with all the other neighbors and just go over some ideas. But that'll still be a week before we're due back here at the planning board. So you guys can come up with some ideas that you think will work for you and be, you know, financially, financially powerful for the program.
Okay, that sounds great.
And it's, but it's, so we, we need to make sure people realize that there's a site plan process that really speaks to lighting and screening and those things. And that's the ZBA. And so what Matt is saying is that, you know, they're gonna go for that board and, and you need to participate in that hearing and you need to iron out a lot of this prior to that. And then the planning board's role is, is really to look at this subdivision road and the division of the parcels. And, and that's our responsibility. So when, when you get into lighting, screening, all that sort of stuff, that's the ZBA. So I think it's good to have those, this discussion here to cover some of those issues. But our responsibilities end at, at road, road network essentially.
Drainage.
Yeah, drainage.
Can we also be clear about what, what we're actually approving? Because it's really not only the business that's being proposed.
Right. It's not about the business that's being proposed, the property lines.
Right. So make, make sure the neighbors know that what we are enabling.
You want, I think Jay says, wants to make it clear, the name is that we're approving here is a subdivision with two properties and a road. What goes on those properties come with the site plan. So there's no guarantee when we approve the subdivision that, that the venture park will go in.
Right. Zone limited business. It could be two commercial buildings.
Two, two commercial buildings. So what?
Yeah.
I think it needs to be understood as well, though, that the town is a partner in that discussion, which is unusual. I mean, normally, a private entity gets a road constructed and that gives them access to a lot that has a certain use allowed and, and they go forward. Whereas in this one, the, the town is a partner that's working with River Bridge on what transpires there in the future. And so.
I find both parcels or just the one?
I think that there's, there's a lot of give and take because I think that you may very well find in the long run that, you know, a joint venture suits all our interests more than two independent ventures. So it's, it's a hybrid in a way. I mean, it's not as though the town completely, you know, leaves the table and says, you know, go ahead. So it's a, it's different than what we've normally seen when we've created a subdivision road.
We're more, usually, we're more into the details of site plan approval. All the things. So we have more of a say, more of comments, more questions about screening, lighting, noise, hours of operation, that type of thing. And that's sort of been, it's a different board that's gonna oversee that.
Yeah. But and to some degree, the selectmen in the agreement that, you know, you proposed had some oversight even prior to the site plan approval process into some of those issues, which is, again, that's unusual. Normally, it, it just flows straight to ZBA. So there's been more transparency, I guess I'd say, in, in this process than you'd, you'd normally find. Which is good, you know.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, observations?
See you in two weeks.
Take motion to continue. Yeah, I'm just gonna. Okay. Anything, anybody from the board?
Okay. Hi, I'm Betsy.
Hi, Betsy.
167 River, Betsy giving you another River Road West. I have a question. Since there's a road going right through this property work and this may be conservation, but you're, you're doing something with the roads. So what about the animal life and the conservation and all, the, you know, the wildlife that comes from the woods and goes to the river? How do, tell me, I mean, I'm concerned about that. It looks like you don't know. But if there's a road crossing through that big meadow and then the trees are getting, you know. It's not that I oppose your development. I just am curious about the wildlife that uses that land to get to the river.
So are you referring to the course in the trees or?
The road. Like the, you're, aren't you putting in a gravel road and a 100 space parking lot?
Yeah, well, right now, I mean, it's.
Oh, you're just talking about the road?
Yeah.
But the, the parking area will be in the former spot where the gravel pit is. So it's gonna, where the road and the construction of the parking lot will take trees down. We tried to be cognizant of tearing, you know, more trees down than we had to.
Sorry, the trees.
So it's, it's a pretty wide open area right now where the parking is going. It's a former gravel pit.
Yeah, I've been back there. I know. I just still feel some concern for the, you know, when all the wildlife that goes to the river through there.
I understand.
You know, they've built tunnels and things like that. It's not. It's not unusual to think of the wildlife in Berlin.
Actually, 14 of the 26 acres is in a conservation restriction that the prior owner recorded on the land records and had approved by the Conservation Commission and the state. That provides a good place, that's on the southern side of River Run. I guess at some point, what you're saying is if animals go from that area all the way to the Assabet River, they're going to be walking down that road. And I guess that's true, although I think it must be true today because the conservation area doesn't come all the way down to River West. So, you know, we're not paving it, we're trying to keep it as...
Packed gravel and...
Yeah, as natural as we can so that it would be friendly, but, and there are 14 acres that can't be touched that I think are good for the wildlife. But any development has an impact.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just as far as we're concerned, we're only taking down dead or almost dying trees. We're not taking down any live or healthy trees.
It must be a life expectancy of those trees that grow if you have, again, that's just another question about the trees.
Yeah, well, we'd move, we'd actually move, we'd adjust the platforms as the trees grow. Oh, yeah. If we don't have trees, we don't have a business, so we need the trees to be healthy.
Be kind to the trees, right?
Yeah.
And the trees will be kind to you.
Exactly.
Any other questions before we entertain a motion to continue this meeting?
I know everybody wants to go home, but I'm going to throw one more out there. It's Tom Gomina again. Under what circumstances would the town purchase that parcel? I mean, why would it be advantageous to, you mentioned the value of it, but we would also be foregoing tax revenue on it in the hope that we might regain that with rental, a lease or rent or something like that? So why would we do, take a sure thing of revenue versus take a risk, you know, buying the land and hoping, you know, I know you fully believe you're going to be successful and I hope you are, but, you know, if it didn't pan out, then we wouldn't have that revenue.
Well, since 2009, the town has had that right and hasn't exercised it. I think it was more, let's build something into the development agreement with River Bridge that gives us that right. And maybe one day, we want to put a municipal building up there for some purpose or... I think it was just felt by the finance committee and others in town that, okay, we've got a certain amount of mitigation that we've negotiated, but let's just reserve ourselves the chance to do this if we want, and we're never forced to. So I think it's just a choice that the town has.
And I believe the first one to develop it had to put a road.
That's correct.
The town would wait for a long time.
That's right.
Okay, no more?
I move that we continue the hearing to September 9.
9, September 9.
Is it?
No. September 12.
At 8:00?
At 8:00.
Huh? Second of them.
Whoa, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have the discussion, sorry. Any discussion? I don't know, any discussion? Okay, no discussion, hearing nothing? None? Oh, last round, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you for coming, that was good.
Thank you very much, we'll be back on the 12th.